We're gonna get online and.
Hands and skip out the door. Next to you if you're gonna do that, that is not, no, you're not.
I always start by turning it off and turning it on. Is it plugged in? That's where I usually start.
It wants to do that, or even up there, you just wanna remind me later. Before I, because I almost went to just like.
Our technical difficulties.
You start that recording. We will call this meeting to order. Uh, of the Syracuse work session. Uh, our first item is public comments. This is a chance for you to address the council with anything that might not be on our agenda. Or things you'd like us to uh, consider at a later time. Is there anybody here for public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Uh, the next item on our agenda is we have invited. Uh, Shannon. Um, is our new CTC coordinator. Uh, for the North Davis region and we'd like to give her a chance to introduce herself to the council and CTC for those of you. Uh, many of, most of you are really familiar, but.
Okay, so.
Well, I was just gonna say, we thought it would be important to bring Shannon in because um, number one, she's new and. Um, she's hit the ground running and we're super excited to have her and Dave, you've been in attendance for some of her meetings and. Did an excellent, good start, um, but also I'm leaving and so. We're talking about, I think it'd be important for those who are sticking around to know kind of what we're looking for. Uh, for somebody to attend CTC and how to keep things going, so.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you so much. So yeah, I'm Shannon Bussy. I'm new to Utah, been here about a month. I moved from Virginia, so I'm really excited to be here. And um, I am unbelievably excited by the work that the coalition has been doing and is going to continue to be doing. So what is the CTC and why should you care about it? Most of you probably are familiar with it a little bit um, or a lot. But our big goal is to help Davis County youth live safe and healthy lives by preventing substance use problems and mental health problems. We exist to work alongside of our partners. This isn't work that anybody can do, you know, in a silo or alone. And one way that we've done this is by supporting what I hear is a phenomenal event called Illumination and I'm really excited to participate in that and be on the board. Another way that we've done this is through the classes that we teach. So we started really small and we have grown teaching families. We're in all the sixth grade classes in the county now, some of the eighth grade classes and. On the horizon is a workshop that we wanna bring into the communities to teach the frontline youth mentors. So that we can reach community saturation and we can really help everybody understand what this is and why it's important to interact with youth in. Specific ways to strategically strengthen. You know, their relationships, strengthen their skills, strengthen their confidence in themselves. Syracuse, these are numbers from May of twenty twenty-three. In the North Davis CTC, we had um, interacted with almost two thousand people. We had served with our. Programming, our workshops and our classes. Davis County numbers were six thousand eight hundred and sixty-one. But this all started right here in a partnership between Syracuse and Clearfield. Like you guys were the catalyst to bring CTC to the entire county. And you know, we're setting our horizons to expand and to grow and to really, you know, make more of an impact. One of um, two of the, my favorite quotes that have come from one of our programs from the youth when they were asked, what did you learn? One person said, how to avoid getting into bad situations. Another person said, I learned that people actually care about me. Those two things are prevention in a nutshell. Like that's why we're doing this work. That's why these, these relationships, these partnerships, these community involvement initiatives are so important. So like Seth mentioned, why am I here tonight? It's to um, you know, elections are coming up. There's going to be a changeover and so I'm here to ask that. Our partnership can continue, that there will be a council member assigned to work with us on our community board. The mayor is a, a very key player in, on our key leaderboard and he's been. You know, instrumental in helping us with some of that. And Seth has been very involved from the beginning. He's currently serving as our treasurer and intends to continue that for a little while. Um, and so our funding, right, our grants, our funding, he has been part of all of that and so he sees the money that's coming in. He helps um, prepare for that and he is able to make sure that. That funding, it goes to. Programming that is in integrity to the mission, you know, and serves your city. It serves the city of Syracuse. Um, and so you know, I'm kind of here to ask that and why is that valuable? You guys know your city. You know your city, you have a pulse on your community, you understand the complexities of, you know, the demographics that are involved, um. The people, the needs, the resources, all of that. You guys have a pulse on that. And so that strengthens our partnership. You know, your schools, um. You have better access to resources, to resources that we may not know about, um, and can help open those doors. You could also guide the application of those resources in a way that serves your city well and your population well. Um, and you know, lastly, just being an effective liaison. The information that comes back, you know, you could have someone report back all of the information that we're sending out. All of our efforts can be reported back to the council and just be in partnership for that. So um, do you guys have any questions about what we're doing, what we plan to do?
Now's the money ask.
You know, and just so you know, we've had every year, we've had workshops here in the city. They've been. Uh, we've, every time they do a family event, we have been full. They've always had full family events, which is great. And obviously Illumination, which we all know about, is a big event here in the city and that's been a big part of it, so. Syracuse is a pretty active part of CTC.
One thing we did um, this last uh, Thursday. Was it Thursday we met? Uh, Mayor Ma and I participated in um, assisting them with a little bit of an inventory of how and you know stakeholders in the community that we can find that. Are untapped resources. So we talked about just all these different potential areas of intercepts in our community where we're gonna. Catch people that work with kids in the business community or at, you know. Any, you know, there's like five hundred different things we put up there, but I think that's where we're looking to again, multiply our efforts and, and find additional resources and avenues to. You know, address the youth and so. Now we're, I think it's in, in good hands. You guys can tell Shannon's awesome and we're excited to have her.
Welcome. Thank you. Been through Jess and Viviana and now you Shannon, welcome. We're tickled to have you.
I'm excited to be here.
So from DC, Virginia or Roanoke?
Culpeper, so little tiny town, kind of about two hours south of DC. Yeah, rural, so here, there's so much here, so many businesses and so many Halloween parties. The Halloween town.
Okay, thank you very much. Our next item. Who is it? Um, the next item on our agenda is annexation petition twenty-three or twenty twenty-three dot O two. This is the Cook property of a hundred and twenty-nine plus acres and um. Anyway, so uh, we've heard about this one. Now it's first time that we're actually gonna discuss it. It's uh, property that most of our citizens have believed has been in the city all along. Because it is kind of a peninsula right up into the city, so it makes complete sense. Um, through all of the traveling around and trying to figure out what's going on with. The different entities that have to approve an annexation, the county was concerned that we would. Uh, include the roads because technically. The petitioner can't ask for roads because they're not in the county or they're not, there's property. But the county was concerned that we would be left with half roads, because the other half of the road is already in the city. We have fixed that, so if you hear anything about that, we fixed the survey and we will be annexing everything. We don't annex property that doesn't come with roads. Uh, anyway, any questions or discussion on this?
I mean. We're, we're excited to have him in.
It's been a long time coming, so I think we'll just move forward with that, then uh, there will be a voting item on that next uh, meeting. Okay, we have some. We have some planning items, uh, quite a few tonight to discuss. The first is pre-application uh, request. This is for a property cha- uh, located at twenty-four hundred south, twenty-four fifty west. This is a request to change from R one to R three. It's the applicant here. No, that's, yeah, that's yours. Yes, okay, okay, so you've asked, tell us what you'd like to propose. And what questions you have for city councils?
Uh, hi, my name's Dave Erickson. This is Keith Lindstrom. We're with Leisure Villas. We're the. Group that did the Sunset Park Villas project uh, behind Smiths. Terrific experience working with Syracuse back in the day. It's been about twelve years now. Look forward to doing another project. So the reason we're here is, uh, I, I hopefully you got this little package you put together. It explains it, it's kind of an odd situation, so. Obviously, as you know, legacy highways coming in. Uh, and UDOT. Had a couple of orphan pieces left. We picked up one. Uh, Ovation picked up another parcel. The particular parcel that we've picked up uh, has significant issues with it regarding drainage. An existing drainage situation. Uh, the reason we're here today is just to, so to explain our position in that with this new highway expansion. Uh, we believe it's, it's pertinent that um. You know, the city, it's just appropriate time to reevaluate what is the appropriate zoning and. Perhaps general plan changes that ought to be considered out in that area. With all this new traffic noise that's coming in and we, and, and, and leaving market considerations aside with the fact that no one can afford a house anymore. And so sizes are getting pushed smaller and smaller. Our situation is we are asking for a rezone. Uh, primarily because the situation uh, that exists to our north boundary of this parcel as it was approved. Laid out as an R three layout. Uh, when the development went in, has imposed the situation that, that we're required to tie into. And the only way we can tie into it and make it a functional subdivision. Is to go for an R three designation. We're not trying to get. High density out of his, we're only asking for thirty-two lots. Where it would be allowed for forty, but with the. Roads where they are and of the lot widths, how they're laid out. Both of those issues have created a situation where. We're asking to tie into those uh, existing situation and, and that would require an R three in order to make. Those two uh, conditions.
Okay, so this is a pre-development consultation, so what are your thoughts, council?
I, I'm not clear on why the road is. Making you. Yeah, that's. Be an R three, it's just not, I, 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 I read the ride out, I've gone through it all, it, it's not clear to me.
Is this the same, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, let me ask, so if you take this west road, it's uh, twenty-seven seventy-five west, okay, that road's fixed, right? We have to tie into that. Sure, so we were to tie into that with the existing R one designation, that would end up with a hundred and sixty-three foot wide lot. And a forty-foot buildable area, depth-wise, because of the setbacks, the front and rear setbacks that are imposed.
On these four lots, on these four lots.
Yeah, and you only end up with two because. Uh, you need the requirement to meet twelve thousand lot lots. And so that's basically an unbuiltable lot. Forty feet.
Forty feet, that's the depth, wow.
Yeah, and so. Theoretically, back when that subdivision was approved, the city would have had, had to consider, oh, well, we're creating this situation. The one that comes in, ties into that is having to deal with that same situation and our position is it doesn't seem reasonable. Uh, or even rational that, that, that those lots. Should be something significantly different. Than the ones that are existing directly north of it.
Well, keep in mind that a previous council decided that that was an effective use of land. But then a subsequent council, none of the people here were on either of those councils. But uh, a subsequent council said, this didn't work out well, so we're gonna change our zoning so that we don't do this again.
I have a question, and I know it's. Is this the same company that bought the property to zones south of that one?
No, no.
So that's not the. Built over at the.
Yeah, they're later item on the agenda.
I, I feel like everybody's trying to turn this whole area into high density and just be, I'm an ad person. Sitting here and just because there's a highway coming through right there, the rest of the highway doesn't have high density coming off of it. All the way. So it doesn't really have any density coming off of it all the week. So it doesn't mean that we necessarily have to have any high density coming off of it in place of what's there.
When you're saying high density, are you talking R three? Yeah, we're, we're just looking for, what was it, thirty-two lots, I think. As it sits right now.
For them, uh, that you, the same as, that's what's to the north of it, right?
Totally agree.
Yeah, um, so.
I mean, some of them are, you guys know the ratios.
Is one and two, is that right?
Which falls under the R.
We only have six locks that are. That are fall into the size of an R three. We need the R three for the eighty-foot width. So it's both, I actually need both things, because the road kind of set the, set the stage on the west side and then the lot sizes which set the road on the east side, north of us.
So is, is it only these four parcels that are causing you? To go for R three? Just those four parcels?
Uh, n- not entirely, but, but that's.
West or R two or they're not?
It's the two road stops that. Except how this thing needs to, and then we have to work around all, the, the reason there's so, such a diversity in lot sizes is just because we're also having to work around the existing. Drain system that, that is in the ground and so.
Called it.
That's, that's why, that's why we're asking for this.
This is the drain to you, Nate?
This is my, I told you so loud, that's, that whole area sucks for drainage, it's horrible.
So do you have an issue with drainage beyond this? Will, what will that do with your drainage? Is that an issue that you need to bring up?
No, we just have to live with this massive easement that's there and we can't move that line because that's a fed easement. And if you've ever worked with trying to move a federal easement, none of us is gonna be alive long enough to get that accomplished. So we've had to try to fit a subdivision around the existing. Massive drain line that's out there.
So just, just for Vermont, so if I'm playing devil's advocate here, so there's no configuration in here. In which the current R one zone would work in this scenario.
Not unless you think that it's reasonable to try to build a house that's a hundred and sixty feet long and forty feet deep.
Now it also make those ones all there, basically, you know, thirty feet deep.
Actually, Clearfield has some beautiful houses like that. Their two, those two stories right there on one thousand on the.
But they're not that wide, you know, they aren't this. They're super tall and skinny, but they aren't, they, they aren't long.
Again, less than twenty percent of the velocity we're asking for are. And R three designation.
You know, we'd even be okay if, you know, when it goes to city council, if you guys said, you know, we'll give you R three, but we're gonna limit you to thirty-one or thirty-two.
We have to be really careful, because whenever you. Give a zone, uh, let's say that the council did give you R three. And then you come back and you say, now that we have R three, we're not gonna abide by that because there's no binding. If we give, if we change the zone. Something binds you to that.
That's true, but what binds us to, to it? Trying to fit around the existing, so, infrastructure that's out there.
Are we allowed, and I can't remember, are we allowed to split the designation and do R two on those four and do an R three on the rest of it?
Let's talk to Brody.
So if, if the council feels like this might be appropriate, but it's trying to find, you know, the right tool or zoning. Remember, we, we just either, I think we just amended our ordinance. Under the new requirements from the state legislature on building materials. Um, so you could do, you could keep it R two or. Maybe even R one, does that matter? But then under a development agreement, allow for the more, the more units. On the smaller lot sizes. Like, like no greater than thirty percent could uh, meet the R three. You could have it tied exactly to that plan.
Well, we do development agreements all the time.
Development agreement. And then, and then with that, you can also. Then um, you know, require the, the building materials that we've traditionally had, but can no longer require under the.
And that can be part of the development.
My concern with just this whole area where general plan is R one, coming in and switching. A section here, there to R three. And then setting a precedent and you guys even mentioned in years already that, hey, we're doing this for ovation. We haven't approved that for ovation. So even in the documentation here, it's referencing, hey, you're doing it for somebody else. And so then we run into this, yeah, we run into this issue, we're setting pres- precedence where we're.
And if you look at this, it's a very good point, because if you look at where this property is. And the one that we're gonna talk. Between them, are we now forcing the hand of what's in between these two properties?
That, that, that's where I'd like to try and keep it to. Like, I could see R two going in this area. Makes sense. Um, so I, I'd be more likely to do an R two with some type of agreement that allows for. A few of the lots to have something like that. Is that a possibility? Yeah, so, so that, that's what I'm saying. I could get behind that, but going to R three, I agree because it'll turn into a forcing function for adjacent.
I think we would be, because most of our lots are over ten thousand.
Agreed.
It's just the ones that we can't change because of the factors on the ground or the factors that were pre-existing.
I think we need to work with you on.
So if we were to do an R two with the development agreement, allow six, eight thousand foot lots, I think we're good.
So I'm only saying, I'm not seeing six, I'm seeing.
There's two around the bend, it's just. It can't be enlarged due to the. The road arch curves into them to meet the road.
Okay.
There's just no way to.
Yeah, so.
Oh, I see it there.
I'm gonna go back to what the needs of our citizens are. And they surely can't afford larger lots because that ends up evenly into the size home they can have. And I think there is absolutely nothing wrong with giving us a better mix. Of, of lot sizes because, because to me. First of all, we're talking about twenty percent or less of this being R three. The rest of it is two and, and one. And you're giving a little bit of, we're, we're giving you some leeway there to make this a workable subdivision, so I. I, I don't have a problem with the development agreement. I especially like the idea of the, the development agreement because that. Gives us some control, whereas the legislature is kind of removed some of that from us and this helps us to retain a. Equality and standard, so I think that's fine.
And even though none of you were around. When I did the first, the, the first development agreement on Sunset Park Villas, that was. A complete win-win for us and the city, because we created a deal wherein we got our density that we were asking for. We improved an off-site detention pond, turned it into basically a park. Further west, I can't remember the street that it's on. The city got a cleaned up detention thing. We got what we were after and I. I, I think we should have earned some street cred with that project. It's about twelve years old now, it looks brand new, but so um. I, I mean, we do what we say, is all I'm saying.
I, I live right behind Sunset Bills. It's a very nice, very nice development. But yeah, in, in my mind, this is what development agreements reform. We're not looking at setting precedence for rezoning a whole area or anything like that. There's a specific challenge with this lot, with this. Piece of land that we can overcome with a development agreement. I, I'd be more prone to go that route.
Okay, so it sounds like you got your feedback.
Yes.
And um, we will.
So um, Robert, in regards to drainage issues, do you foresee, I mean, it's hard to predict, you know, how this will play out, but we've been talking about that on every one of these. That's up against the freeway there, but um, we've seen projects starting to come in that are remediating some of this with Phil and other tactics, what, what do you? Are you getting pause or?
Uh, no, I actually feel like this can be remedied. Uh, the B five drain line goes diagonally, they kind of. Um, talked about before, as long as you're building whole space, you know, your easement must stay there. Um, as long as the pipe's there, uh, and that's possible, um. Well, as long as that's possible, you know, we'd be fine. As far as surface drainage and storm drainage. Or sewer, certainly, you know, that's some shallow infrastructure, which I believe you're aware of anyway. Um, so you'll just have to build your braids and make, make it work. I believe that can.
Cool, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is a recommendation from the planning commission to uh. General map, pla- or general plan map amendment for the property located at fifteen fifty-seven west. Seventeen hundred south, or that's better known as antelope, from low density to commercial. You want to call up the.
Uh, I don't see the applicant, but I'm happy to give you a rundown.
All right, so um, yeah, no, give us a preview of this. Situation that we're looking at and what the planning commission had to say about it.
Yeah, planning commission uh, reviewed this, it's the same applicant for the next two applications, same property. Uh, this was a surplus UDOT property. Uh, this one's unique. I had a, a meeting with UDOT where they were asking about access. That's probably the biggest factor determining land use on this. Parcel is the access situation. They were hoping to get access right onto antelope and planning commission was really worried about what that would spur, because we, you know, on-street parking on antelope or with Espera Center median. But uh, we met with UDOT and we discovered that there is a reported cross-access easement through the apartment complex. And so the apartment complex. Uh, you know, if you have a commercial use and have traffic going through. The weaving through the apartment complex may be problematic. Uh, in my opinion.
So UDOT's trying to get rid of all main road accesses, aren't they? That's what they're doing.
Trying to consolidate them, because that makes it safer.
They're trying to get.
Consolidated those.
Access points on side roads into.
Where were this?
Well, that's what the problem that they're having over here. They're trying to close off all the access points and sending them around and it's. Causing more of a problem than it is benefiting anything.
Yeah, so the planning commission recommended actually approval of the general plan amendment because they figured with the frontage. On antelope, what else would go there? But that, but they weren't privy to this information from UDOT where they were assuming that they could get, get direct access on antelope. But that's not gonna be the case. We know that now after meeting with them.
It makes it so hard to get anywhere when you don't have direct access.
So they would just come in through the apartment, go jet between the two buildings and off we go. And the entrance to the apartment, though. It's right here. Yeah. But they have, so the apartments would have to create. Or whoever would have to create a road. Well, I guess they got this. I don't think they have a choice. UDOT want to. They've already reported that according to UDOT. So where would they tie in though, on the west side, would they?
But that's a retention base.
They've got a big old wall there, they have to punch hole through.
And that's one of those moments, you hope no kids are playing outside.
To my point, this is a popular commercial business. I don't know if we want. A bunch of traffic zigzagging through there, but what's, what's the alternative?
But they've already got.
One at a time, I want to hear from all of you.
You've already got garages back there, so there's starting to be traffic from the apartment complex, I guess. A commercial is gonna increase that.
Yeah, but from the apartment complex, that's like probably the same twelve cars every day. It's not.
It's not. Twenty, forty, fifty different cars going through there daily.
I'm just saying, you're already gonna have traffic patterns.
So I I think that this is the question, we don't know what the commercial use is because so, and we would never know. Well, because it could change, but if it were a high active like drive-through, like you just suggested, council one carver. But we're a drive-through often, you know, where you get that all but in and out, that could be really difficult. If this were somebody who has a customer once every. Once a day or twice a day, and it mostly just an office storage use or something, probably not a problem, but. But once it's commercial, it's always commercial.
Coffee shop, drive-through window.
Yeah, well, I.
But the the question is, what is it in the future?
It makes more sense to have it be office space or the what. I mean, I don't, I don't think that commercials can be our best. Bet at this place.
Where it's impossible to access.
I could see us changing the general plan and then allowing for somebody to come forth with zoning plan in the future, because it's not gonna hurt anything. They'll leave it as is and then have them apply for the zone.
And yet the next time when they have.
Somebody could ever come, because you'd envision, right, like a insurance agent.
Or even a salon that would have just a shorter, you know, you wouldn't have, yeah.
Doctors office. I would drive through there for a doctor's office.
I would never drive through there if it was like a drive-through restaurant.
I don't think anybody would be able to.
Home space area.
Might make sense, but not like a retail commercial.
Yeah, like I'd go there to see the doctor, but.
Yeah, we have options. We don't have to change the general plan. Currently, it's general plan for low-density residential, so.
But if they could get access there, it would make sense.
Yeah, your options are do not be or change something else or. You know.
So we clearly don't have consensus and we're not voting tonight, so this will be on a future meeting.
Just changing it to commercial and then. I guess I didn't think.
Why change it if it's?
I don't think we want to zone it commercial.
It's only what, is that really only? Is that really only third of an acre?
Yeah, it's tiny.
Then that, that just doesn't.
I mean, look at.
Yeah, so can can we basically just say um. We're, I I don't know that that is a viable commercial space.
Someone needs to put some goats out there or something, like it's just a mess. So horrible.
Brody just brought up a good point. We should clarify what goes in general commercial.
Within the general commercial general plan designation, you can do office, you can do general commercial. Uh. You can also do M X D. Uh, so if you look at the general plan map, there there's multiple options. It's not just one thing.
They would still have to get approval for what they want to do. So if they wanted to drive through, then we'd we'd still.
Yep, remember the general plan is is just kind of this broad brush thing. And it doesn't give them any actual permission to do anything right now.
Little space looks like it would be useful for is to just sell to that apartment complex and let them build extra storage right there. Because or or a park, because honestly. Otherwise, what do you, that's just. Yeah, like you could put a fence across right there, like, I mean, there's fence on both sides.
Anyway, I, we clearly are gonna have to think about this one. You can talk amongst yourselves between now and the next meeting. Uh, we're not gonna take a vote till then, so. Let's move on. The next is recommendation uh from the planning commission. Zoning map amendment for property located at fifteen fifty seven, this is same property. From R one to general commercial.
So now, uh, you know, obviously same property. Uh, now we're getting into the specifics. It's the current zoning. Uh, and their request is to go general commercial. Uh, planning commission's recommending to deny this one because of the traffic concerns. So the first one they recommended to approve, the second one they recommended.
So I feel like we've just.
Specifics of what's going in there to be able to do a zone change.
Yeah, and that was some of their reasoning is that the applicant did not know. They have like a. Letter of interest from a specific company there. They they think.
They just bought some U dot property over winging it.
Pretty much. Yeah, they they think maybe like a coffee shop or something, but that was under the assumption that they could get a driveway directly off of. So that might change.
Okay, so let's move on, because we just just spoke hammer this one. Uh, recommendation from planning commission zoning map amendment for the property located at eleven eighty eight west, two fifty south. Industrial to business park. This is the property up off one ninety three near, you know, next to the. Uh, Bear River Storage behind it. This was under contract to become business office, exactly what would be in the business park zone. But that kind of fell through their funding and so. The, this was initiated by the city to rezone it so that it couldn't just be an extension. Of.
Yeah, so if you can see here, the the purple color is uh would be the change from the gray colors industrial, the purple to. Business park. The property owner was trying to make a comment during public comment period, but I guess we we missed them.
Is that who it was that was on?
That was the guy that was trying to raise his hands.
Oh, he just missed.
He's still, is he still on?
He's probably still on, is my guess.
Okay, so uh, I'll invite you into the conversation since we missed you earlier. I apologize for that.
No worries. I appreciate it, guys. I wanted to apologize for not being able to be there in person today, but um. Yeah, and so I guess to comment on what you were saying, actually, we are. Set to break ground here next week. We uh, we have talked to Noah and and actually to the building officials and. We need to start on Monday. Or our permits will expire, so our intent actually is to go forward and and build the the business park here right away. Um, I, this changing of the zone, I I do think will be uh. It could or could not affect our property, obviously. No one really knows what tenants are gonna come in and and try to lease these spaces from us. Really, at this market and what we've been facing recently, we're just trying to leave ourselves as much flexibility as possible with prospective tenants. Didn't want to limit them. I mean, if it's more of an industrial use and it doesn't fit in the business park, I I know that there's some conditional approvals that we can go there, but. Rather than that industrial is a permitted use within the industrial zone, and so we are for. Um, we are for re-entering into the development agreement. I I don't want to speak for the city, but I I understand that. Really, the uh, storage units, possibility of storage units is is a big issue here, and we are not storage unit builders. We don't intend to be storage unit builders. So we're fine to completely. Limit that and and squash that. We we have no intent of uh pursuing that option. And also, again, with us starting next week, it's it's just. Trying to leave itself as much flexibility as possible.
Hey, thank you.
Does this make this agenda item O B E?
Um, no, I think we still have to, the discussion item of. Do we feel like it's necessary to protect the city here, or do we just let it go as?
Look, there's gonna be a building on the lot.
Like we were talking about a little bit ago, the development agreement that he could put that in there to not. To limit them from not having those, but I got a question about this property. I I mean, with what it is now and if they build that building for a business park. Um, have you guys gotten a lot of tattoo question, like tattoo? You have also, yeah, so there's a lot of tattoo artists that want to start a tattoo spot in Syracuse. But we only allow it in a dust, in industrial area. And that would be an ideal spot in that business park building. For them to consider it, because it would fit there, and that would be the only way they would be able to come to Syracuse. And I get emails about once, twice a month, and apparently city, people city hall think I'm the one that they should send the emails to. I support that. This is why I'm having this conversation now. So we've got a lot of artists that live actually in Syracuse. And they want to start a studio in Syracuse, but they can't because of the zoning. And this good building that if they're not, if it's not gonna be the, you know, storage, and it's actually a business park, that. Could be a viable option for those people.
Sure, what was the original development agreement?
The the original development agreement was with Bear River Storage. They bought all of the ground. And the city was not excited about storages. And and the base of all this is really about. The city not wanting a ton of storage units in a prime industrial spot that could be great for business, especially a rail. But you know, really nice kind of upscale business park.
It is, yeah.
And so we're really just trying to protect against that land use that takes up a lot of space, doesn't have jobs, doesn't have a lot of uh. Assessment revenues or anything like that, so. Um, you know, and and the information about breaking ground is new since it's been in the packet. There is still some risk there, you know, there's. This project's been delayed after delayed after delayed, and we've been told that it would start and then it didn't start. So there's still a chance that it doesn't start. I mean, we want to believe that it will, but. Um, so we wrote, we, I would recommend that there's something in place to protect us from that storage unit use.
One thought I would put out there is that we're not voting tonight. And they suggest that their building permit uh expires.
And when they clear the ground, the way they lay, do their layout, we'll know then what it's gonna.
So we we can just future discuss this for possible.
I I would really like a viable spot for people that could go be tattoo artists somewhere.
Okay.
Of the health department, they handle the rest.
So we'll, we'll move that on, continue to the next meeting.
I appreciate it, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next is recommendation for planning commission general map amended amendment at property. Twenty-four, twenty-five west, twenty-seven hundred, from low density to medium density.
I can give a primer on this one. Uh, we have applicants here as well. Uh, this is like. You know, that little neighborhood night at city council. Uh, so we have another application for a property right next to the other one. Uh, their uh, their request is to modify the general plan map, so there's, there's a map in in the packet. Uh, you can see, uh, you know, if you go to the next one, uh, our. Our current general plan is that yellow color is low-density residential. And then if you go to the next one, you see the orange colors, what they're requesting is the medium-density residential. Uh, so within the medium-density residential general plan designation bids multiple zones. Uh, but I, you know, I don't think it's a secret. They're they're wanting to go for the P R D zone. Uh, but the first step here in this process is to work on the general plan map. And so that's what they're here. They've included uh, you know, some concept plans and things and. If you want to ask some questions or any questions.
Well, with respect, they've met with everybody, right? So what are your thoughts on this council?
Um, so I had a question. So Noah, can you clarify in the packet you described? Um, some of these as more or less flag lots. Is it on the two? Could you, could you clarify on that? I know, I mean, it's not like traditionally considered based on the fact that we've done these at multiple locations now, like antelopes edge and then also. What side, you know, so I just want clarification on that.
Yeah, so.
Attached and not.
That's a good question you bring up, because there is a significant difference between the shared driveway of uh. Connected housing and the shared driveway of separated housing. Because when you get into separated housing, sometimes you have uh, shared uses like. Oh, you know, my friends came over and blocked my way out of my house, or. Your kids there keep leaving stuff out in the driveway that that we fall play in, and I can't get out of my house.
Five and over, it wouldn't be kids.
The point is, is that sometimes shared driveways, the of disconnected houses bring more likely scenarios than. People who know that there is no parking in a shared driveway.
Yeah, the concept of a flag lot is like where you have a house. That faces the back of another house, so you're like single file. And so in the traditional neighborhood. We're looking at like urban design, a welcoming neighborhood. It's almost like you have a presence on the street. You're a first classes, you know, so when you're hidden away. Uh, you know, you you just, sometimes it creates problems with um, you know, emergency response and. Fire and stuff, but as long as the the shared driveways are designed in a way that the fire truck can get down there, you know, if they can find it. But it's it's just kind of more of an infill type development pattern where this is a greenfield development. Uh, you know, and so if you look at Woodside Stillwater, we have similar. Uh, development pattern where they have the little shared ones, and then the the units on the do face the street have a side entrance.
And then on the side face the.
And then those ones face, because you don't want to. Yeah, we wouldn't want to have a a front facing the back, because that creates privacy problems for the front people too to have the house.
I guess I was just surprised when you said that, because I always assumed that these would be the the further ones would be then facing the the private drive.
We could, we could work that out and, you know, make sure that the development agreement and the ordinance does have some. Requirements that the doors face a certain way, but we're just not really in to that level of detail in. So we're really looking at the land use, so we can work out which direction the door faces.
So I I actually worked with Mr. Frost to go talk to Mr. Kurt Williams. Over there, where, because his arena is right there, and I was dead set against this, against this at first, because what. Mr. Kurt Williams and his family do for the agricultural community, they provide a very safe space for um, people in the equine. Area ag to practice and kids, and they save these kid rodeo kids hundreds of dollars. Not a couple of thousand a year, just in practice fees alone. So I feel like as our arena kind of sucks or does. That it's a. The Williams family provides that. For free to the to the kids of the agricultural community here in Syracuse. However, Mr. Frost was very kind to work through all this. They moved the detention area. Up a little bit and over, so it was near the horse arena, so it wouldn't affect as much people with their houses and the complaining would be less and things like that. So we went, we set up meetings twice to go talk with Mr. Kurt Williams both times. He stood us up. So I, yeah, and I I even told him I feel like his time is more valuable than ours, so he. We definitely went out of our way to go talk to him. I think this is something that is. A good concept for the city. When I turn fifty-five, I don't want to live with a bunch of kids next to me either, so I get it. Like, I got one kid. I don't, I don't want it, you know, like I can handle the horses, I can't handle the other neighbors' kids. So I I I respect the fact this is in a demographic that we've only kind of got one or two places for in the city. That, and I know I'm not the only one that doesn't want to be around kids at fifty-five, so. And those, I don't ever see vacancies, like housing vacancies over there, and I know the one. Did have a problem with the ag community right there, the equine community, right, people that are right there, and they've been trying to fix it continuously, but. I do like the idea of it and the concept of it is necessary in Syracuse, because our older community, they just. Some of them just want to be left alone, man. I get that. I get it.
I'm not sure, you will, go ahead, other council.
Yeah, well, my other, my other thought was, and I don't know how you guys feel, but I would prefer honestly to have a full green space in this area. That was my concern, it's the, and I don't know if you guys could work on it and give me additional five percent, but I I would prefer the full green space. Um, I don't know what that movie would equate to, I didn't, I don't know if that was in there, but.
I think we, we talked about that to go towards the horse arena.
I I would rather, I I feel like the priority should always be for the green space where the houses are. Um, and I'll say, I don't really support, this is a concept, just because it doesn't, you look at this and. This obviously does not fit in what we're looking at on the screen. It's it's way denser than anything around it. Um, by several orders of magnitude. Um, the, I don't feel that in a P R D, I expect there to be. Gathering spaces. The whole point is it's supposed to be more of a community feel that has. Features and things like that built into it. I don't really, I mean, I see a few detention basins and some open space.
But detention bases are necessary where the.
I I agree, but we're counting them as open space, and they're not really going to be able to be used as open space. They're gonna usually be filled with rubble and things like that as. Especially in spring, so I don't feel like this meets the definition of a P R D in that I don't feel. It creates a community that these people can all interact in. There's no clubhouse, there's no pickleball, there's no, there's no amenities for these people. It's just a bunch of houses, and we hope they can find somewhere to go hang out.
So what would you want then?
I I would like to see, first of all, I think that's too dense for the area. I would also like there to be more amenities, uh, at least a pickleball court. They they want a clubhouse or something like that. I I think if you're building something for the fifty-five and older community. Give the fifty-five and older community the amenities they're gonna want. Uh, I I would say, I'm pretty sure the leisure villas has their clubhouse where. They often use things. That's a place to take the grandkids. You have to bring them all home. This has none of that, and I just, I can't support this as it's currently designed, and I know that this is not a uh. This has none of that and I just, I can't support this as it's currently designed and I know that this is not a, a. Uh, application review for the community, but the concept doesn't come, doesn't meet the definition that I think it should.
I would just point out that I have never seen a PRD this shape. Uh, property, I've seen some weird shapes. But they all seem to be generalized around condensing people near people, not long and linear.
This is not a community.
This is not a community, this is a street. And it, yes.
Yeah, all three of those properties right there that you dot sold off are all gonna be just streets.
Yeah, my, my concern with this is the same concern I have with. It's, it's, it's general map. Uh, general plan zoning map R one and we're considering PRD. So if we're gonna consider this for this area, then we would need to reconsider the.
The whole area.
The whole area, because again, as soon as we say, okay, we can do a PRD in this. L shaped.
Every single one is gonna.
Everyone is gonna say, well, look, you did it here, we have to do it with us. So we'd either have to look at changing everything or have this one.
And I don't. You know, I mean, we have to be considerate, I guess, of things can go in weird places, but. You know, the, the major establishment in the, inside of that LGA. Is a rehab facility that is. That deals with a lot of.
It's a youth center, it's not. Yeah, it's you, but it's.
We get a lot of calls, you know, I'm saying, we have a lot of calls.
Well, I, I don't have a problem with the shape of this because to me. To me, we have a great need, we have an aging population. I'm one of them.
Something awesome.
I'm officially old enough to live in this community.
Fifteen years, I'll be there with you.
But I do, but so I, I don't, I think that this is, is a need that we have and I think that we should make. Some adjustments to create these zones and I don't think that the people who live here will be concerned with having. A community feel because they're, they're, if they have.
If they don't like neighbors.
Well, like they already have neighbors, that's what I'm saying, they're already connected to neighbors with their unit, so. It's not like, um, like my street, I don't feel like I need my street to be centered around, uh, uh, you know, I don't need a center base. But I do agree that there needs to be the open space and a clubhouse. I think that is. An amenity that when you don't have a lot and a gathering place, your home might be big enough, but you don't have the. You don't have a big enough space, so I think the amenities are the issue for me. I'm not worried about the shape of the, of the PRD. I do think it's a ne- a necessary. Uh, development for our city, especially it wouldn't, now that we've got two, not just one, but two funeral homes.
So, and I don't know, like, I get that we wanna preserve R one space, but I don't know how many of you guys have participated in developing a project. At all lately, I don't think we could really raise our hand other than saying, we say yes, no, whatever. But it's literally untenable. You cannot afford to build an R one size development anymore. With the financing challenges they're in, with the prices they're paying for these properties, it's impossible. Number two, hold on, number two, is that on top of this, we are in a housing crisis in our state. And these are vulnerable people, right, that we're talking about that need housing. And when you say like, oh, would you live in there? Well, my budget would say, could I live in there or could I not live in there? That's what would dictate this and I'm sorry, but these are the types of projects that provide opportunities. For people that don't have those, other than, you know, us saying yes, no, oh, that's good, that's bad, so. I would think, I would hope you guys at least like reconsider, like. Don't always vote with your own checkbooks, the vote with the people who are actually. Yeah.
Clubhouse is, when I move into a, not like this, but way more space, fifty-five plus community. I would like a clubhouse.
Sure.
Make some issues, but I was going to say, you've got people who are moving, it, it, once they're hitting a certain age where they can't take care of a lot. That's larger, they don't want to, and, and they can't stay in those homes and my parents are some of those people who have. Had to leave a, a half acre and were, were, you know, live with us now because we can take care of their lawn, so. Um, this is a crucial need for our, our city.
I agree, there's no question that. People, I mean, that's why we have lots of senior communities that have HOAs, nobody wants, at that stage in life wants to take care of their yard, but. You know, that, that's a factor that can be a part of the solution. Question is, is this the right place for that?
Here, where, where else are you gonna put it? Like, we're running out of property in Syracuse, we're running out of space. So we're gonna have to start building up instead of out, so where's you gonna put it? Anybody got a better idea?
Uh, and I'd like this in some, you know, some, coming back to the drawing board and, and making a few changes here, but. I would support it if we can get to those.
Like honestly, if it was just another. Neighborhood, I wouldn't, but because it's specifically for an aging population, that's the only reason why I like it.
I think there's a lot of places that would fit our community that are better than here.
Yeah, and, and I, I. Agree with a lot of what you guys are saying, but I do think there are some things that we need to work with and we need to. Um, be conscientious of what people are. There are also neighbors that live there that probably don't want tiny homes next to them. Um, but I do wanna understand more on the flag pole, so in that situation where you have. The house further back. Um, can, I just wanna make sure it's safe for them because of over fifty-five, they are gonna have fire ambulance. I wanna make sure that it's accessible. Um, and does that create a problem? Do we have any?
A very accessible where it's got those streets that.
So, I, I just tell you, I have some.
The back lots, if someone parks there.
I have some experience with that up in Logan, it's pretty, it was pretty common in Logan when I was going to school up there and my neighborhood. Had a lot of those, very similar look of this. And it was a common problem, in fact, it was a real issue with. Maintaining accessibility because you had people, like I said, some of them were kid issues, maybe that's not gonna happen here. But there were other issues with friends just showing up and parking. You know, in your driveway to see you and thinking they'll be there just for a minute, but then you've got people saying, I can't get out. What if it is an emergency? Can you get in? Um, you know, there are some issues with that.
Well, that just becomes a sign issue that says, I mean, we have those all over the place now that say you can't park here. I mean, and you get a ticket.
Perfectly honest, have you been in one of the. Communities like fifty-five, no, they're very considerate of each other. They, they literally are. Once you get to that age.
I mean, you guys still, you specialize in fifty-five plus communities. I don't think they're gonna necessarily come forward with.
I don't have an issue in the fifty-five plus community, my, my whole thing is, again. Be, because when I, when I met with the developer, I said, does this pencil in R one? Yes, it, it pencils in R one, so it's doable in R one. My, my whole thing is, if we're going, if we're gonna be considering one offs, then we need to look at our, our general plan and does it make sense? You know, to, to have this whole section as, as R one, because if we're just gonna take. You know, anything that comes along and say, yes, let's make an exception, let's make another exception, then our general plan map has no.
General plan map probably needs to be looked at because it has been, what, the last three years that all hell broke loose in development? And we have changed drastically that, that what we could afford three years ago, right?
You just said that word.
Oh, well, I'm just talking. And we know that because our kids can't afford homes and our, our grandparents can't afford homes, so. It, it may have been that there was a time when our general plan was exactly right for the city and the needs of the, of the day. But I don't think that's the case anymore.
I agree that we probably do need to take some consideration and we should update our general plan. Um, I wanna bring one thing up though, because. We were visited by a group of realtors at CAG and they said, you know, we've got a real problem. We pushed the, Utah has a housing crisis. And Utah solved a lot of its housing crisis, cut it by more than half. By putting in apartments and now our realtors are saying, you know, we really screwed up because you can't sell apartments. So, um. Now, it depends on who you talk to and when you talk to them, because. And, and this is not gonna be part of that, because it's not an apartment, it will be for sale. It will, it will work to the advantage of the realtors, but the point is, is that. Not everybody was on board with the way that we phrase things and now they're kind of backtracking, so.
I mean, but I work in. Did you get your question answered about the, the? Flag lot, because I can, I know that the fire marshal is probably better to speak on that.
Now, I would like information on, on accessibility and.
And a more in-depth review, uh, on the concept plan, just because with the PRD you do concept and general plan together, but. Uh, it is. Early, so we don't necessarily need to get into the weeds, but on those shared driveways, if you're gonna have more than a hundred and fifty feet, you have to have. Which shows I believe are less than a hundred and fifty feet. And we've also seen the same development pattern over at Stillwater where they have the shared driveways. And one of the parking problems there was that they didn't have a driveway that's twenty feet.
Yeah.
Cause they park diagonally, from what I can see on this one, I believe that they'll have a twenty foot driveway in front of each garage, so that. That'll allow four parking stalls for each unit, which should. So my, my issue or one of my concerns is, is, has to do with the direction of the way the homes face, so if the back homes can face the shared driveway. And the front homes can have their garages on the shared driveway, but the door facing the road, similar to the pattern of Stillwater. And, but then, then we, then we solve the parking problem by giving up the driveway, I think it'll, they can work through those. Issues, me, meeting the fire code and that's something they can work through with. During drill and re-plat and make sure they meet the fire code with the fire marshal.
I'm gonna say, we would kind of beat this to death and we're not voting tonight, so you all have a chance to. Not come up.
Well, we've answered questions for them and I'd like.
I think a lot that would help in the discussion, if that's okay, just a couple minutes.
Okay. Uh, this is not a sales pitch, you gotta be answering questions.
So, uh, one. One, one of my questions is, we've talked about open space, which I'm, I'm good with, with. Working with you on that, one of the thoughts process on that was. Uh, there's, with Syracuse, you have. So much that's not considered open space outside of an attached unit. And so there's actually a lot of open spaces, like forty feet on the west side of some of those units. But if, if, if it would, if you feel as a council that you'd rather have. Um, all of the twenty percent in there, I'm one hundred percent good with that. And I would just need your input on, on. On what you'd like to see and we, we have some stuff that's gonna go in there, but it wasn't, um. Official, uh, concept plan, it was just a. A general plan amendment, but we're, we can put pickleball courts, we can put.
All the green space for people to hang out in clubhouse.
We can do all that, the, the R one. I would just say that an R one doesn't work for an active adult here, it. It pencils if you're selling residential lots. And building residential homes, but it doesn't work for an active adult.
Well, I agree, but I'm sixty, I don't want. I agree with that.
So anyways, any, that was my question is, what would you like to see?
But then if this isn't a, if you're looking for affordability, the more amenities, clubhouse, your HOA fees on top of your mortgage. Are gonna go up, so leveraging across this many lots, maybe not, I mean, it'd be incremental.
Is possible, except.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I totally agree, it's not to do it just.
Okay, again, it's not a voting meeting tonight, so I'm gonna move this on and, um, we'll have more discussion.
Thank you.
I think I'm all right.
I, I just for questions.
We have a recommendation from the planning command, zoning map amendment for property located at. Three forty south, two thousand west, from R one to general commercial.
Okay, this is, uh, across the street from the new hospital up by the high school. On the west side of the street. Uh, this is kind of a unique one because it doesn't really follow parcel lines necessarily, but they are all the same. Owners and they had previously rezoned a portion of it for the hotel. Uh, so now they're coming in and they have some other commercial tenants, like, you know, I would guess like a gas station or some other commercial kinda. Things that they wanna put there and so, uh, they went planning commission, planning commission's recommending approval. It's compared with the general plan.
I mean, it's a good spot for commercial.
Yeah.
No, no arguments there, right? We want commercial in this.
Yes.
Property that's in the middle is already.
That's already zoned commercial.
So this is just making everything the same as the one that's between them.
There is a, a lot actually. Uh, that's between them and one ninety-three, so technically it's not hardcore. Cause UDOT has retained some ownership there and they'll, but they said that their plan is to. Yeah, UDOT will eventually surplus that and somebody will buy it.
And in an odd shape, stick us in another predicament where we've gotta approve some odd shape.
It'll be a full square.
No, 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 no.
Now, look at the. Look at the property above it, I'm talking about the.
Yeah, just one UDOT property directly more.
Yeah.
And it would still remain R one, because they have a petition to change that.
But the assumption I think is that it would be approved as general commercial.
And those other yellow ones, that's actually underneath the road, so it's just kind of a weird thing that's our zoning map.
And this is general plan amendment?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, no, this is, this is actual zoning. That's where I get a little bit concerned, because then if we, I mean, like you said, the, the potential uses then become.
Yeah, they could, they could just move right into site plan and then get a building permit and build any of the permitted uses in the general. Commercial zone. They did have a statement on their application, it says, the proposed uses are retail, food, flex and a hotel. Three main reasons for this rezone. The lining of the general plan with the current zoning map, increase economic activity. Open the door for more new retail and other commercial users. The flex would actually only be permitted in the industrial zone, so.
I'll be able to do that. Yeah, I mean, I agree, I wanna do this, but I don't feel like it's. Time to do it right now. I'd like to try and see all this go together and get some type of concept of what's going in there.
Yeah, I feel like this more goes hand in hand with what you guys were talking about earlier, as far as like updating the general plan map to give the impression that we're ready to. Move on this in a commercial sense, but not necessarily.
Go right in and allow for any commercial use.
Yeah, so the general fine map is already commercial.
I think we have.
We've already signaled that.
Yeah, so this, this is, uh, CW Urban, I believe, and then they, um.
So CW that's requesting this?
Yeah.
Are they the landowners now? They actually went ahead and purchased.
There was a, there was a transfer between.
Was it?
Between Wright Development and CW.
They consolidated all their.
But they're. Yeah, I mean, they're, they wouldn't apply for the rezone unless they were ready to actually build some stuff. They just haven't given us.
They tell us what it is. Okay, so, um.
I would like some more information before I just give a blanket.
Especially from them.
Okay. So I think we have, uh, we've got a response to that. Let's go on to our next item. Discussion and review of Syracuse City Code pertaining to mixed use development zone. There is, uh, there was a request on the table that we relook at the mixed use zone again. And it went to planning commission, they came up with some of their suggestions. We are not limited to discussion on their suggestions, you can all bring your own. It's open, it's on the table for discussion.
Well. I, Paul, I, I guess I'd like to hear what they went over.
Yeah, so essentially what they talked about is having. A minimum lot size, they, I think they were twining between like two and five acres. So that we don't run into that situation on two thousand west where we have the. Small commercial lot with a building with apartments above trying to fit in the.
Sort of an acre.
Yeah, mixed use, and then the other main component was. Increasing the commercial space, yeah. There was some discussion about limiting it to two stories, but I think they ultimately didn't recommend that, cause there was only one or two that wanted to do that, but. So, so, so limiting it to only two stories, but, but I think that was only one or two that. Thought that, so they, I don't think they made that recommendation, so ultimately larger. Larger acreage requirement. And then they were essentially recommending, recommending it each, you know, one story, two story, three story. Doubling the amount of commercial square footage required.
Can you remind us what the commercial?
It's like twenty-four, thirty-six. It's like twenty-four, thirty-six. Fifty-six.
We've got from thirty-six to fifty-six square feet per thousand. For residential.
Yeah, depending on how many stories.
Cause I would like to see. Like, we we've seen that. Commercial pencils because we've had. A couple of very recent um. Developments that have been more than fifty percent and they're doing just fine. So the the fact that you have to incentivize commercial with residential, I don't buy that story anymore. So I'd like to see when we get to three, like to three stories.
I found it particularly interesting that one of the ones that was very low. Commercial. Uh the commercial sold out instantly and there's some struggles to get the rest, so.
So.
The residential.
Well, that's because it's super expensive. That's why it's not affordable, yeah.
So what I guess what I like to see is when we get to the three-story that it's uh it starts approaching the fifty percent. Area because. I think that's what helps the city. Get the commercial we need, and then the mixed use is supposed to be a tool to bring in commercial, and I think.
Cause right now.
Thing we can do it.
Right now, we're at what, like two and a half percent of square footage? At at one story, you know, three and a half and five and a half percent. Of the actual square footage per.
I think we're way too low on.
I think we are way too low.
Well, let's be honest, we were, this was a shot in the dark.
It was.
Again, we weren't sure what we were doing, and so I think this is great to. To look at it again and see if it has worked for us, but I agree that we are seeing an increase in commercial. Uh interest and I think it can, it can work out.
Yeah, I feel like for all the apartments we've built, we we got. Two drive-throughs and eight commercial condos, which doesn't justify what we've done.
And those sold like that, and they did, I bought one of them and they went quick.
So I I guess what I'm saying is for the three-story, instead of getting all the way up to ten percent, I think it should be closer to fifty percent.
I would agree with that, yeah.
Planning just just talked about doubling the numbers on you.
So you're saying, I I'm saying that's not enough.
I agree. I don't think that's.
I better a square feet for every thousand. A a three-story and then have it scaled down from there.
I would have a hard time approving or saying anything on that unless we talk to somebody who's who is invested in Syracuse. Who would that we can get a a viewpoint on whether that's viable or not. I like viewpoints.
And keep keep in mind that like. A tattoo parlor or whatever is about twelve hundred square feet. So like a little shop. Is about twelve hundred square feet. So if you're thinking apartment complex, like what's a fair ratio? You know, that's what you're looking at about twelve hundred square feet for. Each little business, like a Baskin Robbins is. So every two apartments, you'd have one.
Commercial.
One Baskin Robbins for every.
For every two apartments. I think that, I I tend to think that's excessive, so that's why I would like to get some opinions from other. Developers who have done this or who have been involved in commercial as well as residential to see if that's just. Out out.
But they'll keep over building a residential.
We we don't have a ton of space left for that that would allow this. And I would hate to see. Um us only get six Baskin Robbins for another two thousand apartments. Is my my counter offer, yeah. I really like Baskin Robbins. Sure, Baskin Robbins are great.
How many?
I I'm not shooting for Baskin Robbins, I'm shooting for um. Larger items that.
Because.
A Home Depot or something like that. I I would rather get a Home Depot and give up some apartments for a Home Depot.
How many square feet at Home Depot? Three hundred?
Thousand.
Thousand. I mean, six hundred thousand square feet of apartments. You get us the Home Depot.
Sounds like that would, we could get a Home Depot with the amount of our apartment base we have left.
We got another apartment complexes. Miles to sell off.
You know, I'm. I'm just saying that um. We don't have a lot left. Let's not, let's not set up a Baskin Robbins.
But but that's the whole thing because we're we're trying to give an avenue to say, okay, we're willing to not go straight commercial. So let's give up something, but uh uh these numbers here and even doubling it, I think we're still.
Not enough.
I don't know. Way too low.
I mean, I would multiply it by ten.
I like, but I don't know.
Okay, so if I may, we have a couple of questions on the table.
Somebody that, like I said, that has nothing to gain or lose by what they say.
That's a real tough one to find.
Yeah.
Because you know, somebody could say, well, I've never developed in Syracuse, but as soon as they come to this meeting, they might start thinking about it, so they might.
I like to put in four. Eight percent commercial? Where do I sign?
Yeah, so here's, okay, so I want to just. Rally this into a couple of questions. The first question that came up is should we raise the number of commercial? And I think I'm hearing consensus that it should be higher, but not a consensus on how much higher. So that can be worked out, you know, over time.
I will say much higher.
Okay, well, some of you say much higher, some of you say some higher. I'm not gonna say that that's resolved, but I'm gonna say that it's. At least resolved that everybody agrees it needs to be higher. Uh the next part I think is the question of should there be a minimum lot size? I don't hear that we've addressed that yet. So that was brought up by planning commission. What's the council's view on that?
I mean, I I said the same thing last time. For me, I just, I'm fine with reviewing applications. I always think that's like our job is to have interest come forward, so I'm okay with leaving alone, but I know that's probably not a majority opinion, but. That's just where I'm at, so.
I I just don't wanna have, I I feel kind of bad for the guy that came in. Put a whole plan together and he's like, oh, this will never pencil. So there should be a minimum acreage that will actually pencil, and I I agree that's up to them to decide.
That's driven on purchase price.
Sure.
But we wouldn't have, we wouldn't be fair for all of us, though.
But but historically, if you're gonna do a mixed use, I.
Like.
Don't you feel that?
This will be a shot in the dark game.
To. Resident business, if anybody wants to come and do business here to hear out what.
I do.
I I I can understand that. That that's the.
I will say this part, right?
But it's only on state roads right now as well, sure.
Just as a reminder, when the whole time we went through mixed use. The discussion was that it's a catalyst for significant. Business development, that 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 was the reason for having a mixed-use zone at all. So the question is. Is there anything too small that it really, the the business development is is insignificant because. You know, if the if the question is, hey, I have a doctor's office applied to six apartments, is that mixed use? Well, does having one more doctor's office really change the city? Because if that's the case, then maybe mixed use is not appropriate because it didn't gain us something we wouldn't already have. We 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 could get that in one of these medical office buildings that's going up now. And without any having to ground apartments to get there.
I I would like to see some minimum. Acreage because I I don't want to waste people's time. With. Things that we really won't ever consider. Where it's really not.
What is it now?
There's none.
There's no, there's no minimum.
There's none, but I think a half acre doesn't work. There's there's no significant business there.
Planning commission said between two and five.
I think at least two, because if you don't get up to two, you don't really get more than a significant business.
So. This is how I evaluate acreage is how big my horse corrals are and my turnout. Is one acre solid, it's solid acre. So I'm thinking. A three acre should be a solid number. That'd be big enough. Yeah.
And what goes into a business is whatever type of business asked at parking, which is where when we get to like a half acre, one acre. By the time you eat up the parking and setbacks just for commercial, you've got nothing left.
I would say a three acre minimum. Would probably be very, very minimum of what you'll put.
Could go.
Let's use on that, I'd be okay.
I mean, we used to do PRDs had a minimum of five. I don't think that's. Out of the norm to say that. You know, if you have five acres, if you wanna create apartments and commercial. But I'm just throwing that out there. I don't think three's a bad number either. It's an improvement from where.
I think like a minimum.
Yeah.
Would be three, but.
Well, that's.
Five is.
I'd say then let's start.
But how many properties are you gonna find like that?
Last time we did this, I messed with a number and I was on a PRD thing. This is three or four years ago, right? Last time we did this, we actually took an inventory of all the properties that could. Come into play here and it ended up only being like.
Yeah, it'll be handful, but.
Very.
I don't, I think it'd be important to throw again.
What, what?
Kind of filled up. You might be sitting here talking about four parcels. Once you make it three acres or four acres.
Like the one that's down here on two thousand that we were talking about earlier, those two pieces together, once three quarters of an acre and the other one's what, two acres?
Yeah. Of of which the council doesn't have to rezon the MXD at all anyway. On any, any property.
It's true.
We have a job.
Yeah. But at very least, I think. Yeah. Probably.
I think in the three to. I I would think somewhere.
A very minimum.
Okay, so what I am hearing is there's a general agreement that a minimum is necessary.
I I'm.
To eliminate the kind of wasted applications.
Yeah.
Okay, are there other things that you'd like to see changed as accounts of questions we have not answered? And again, I'm just trying to facilitate making sure you cover the issues.
I'd like to reduce the parking requirements so we can have smaller lots.
Are you serious? That's a joke, right? I'm too tired for this.
The 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 only other thing that the the planning commission really talked about was height, but they ultimately didn't decide to do anything with that.
I, yeah, I don't think.
At one point, they talked about building lanes and that was not a starter.
I feel like the ratio. Would kind of solve itself with the height problem.
And and especially on a smaller one. That that this is where this is dragging me into more um. It should be a third, because if you have a single building, expect the bottom floor to be.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah. Business and then to.
Top two.
Yeah.
At a minimum, the commercial should be a third.
Yeah.
I I argue that a lot.
Unless it's like two-story, that it should be a half. Cause you know.
Well. You don't, you don't wanna penalize them for going.
Going lower.
Okay, so if you got a two-story. And you put a business on the bottom.
I I I I follow you.
Okay.
So do we have any conclusions that we can agree to? For a future vote that of how we would change the MXD, or do you want to continue this discussion, uh given some time to think about what was talked about tonight?
I would still like to hear from a developer to see how viable. Our percentages are, even I I I tend to be more in in line with the third. Uh I think the half might be excessive.
Yeah.
And and maybe really limit who will come into town.
I I'm willing to work with on a three-story, it's a third and then scale down from there. Uh kind of the similar type ratio.
I would be okay with that.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm hearing a general consensus that we make it a third. Uh.
No, no building height requirement.
No building height requirement and lot size, it it seems that everybody's agreed at at least three.
When you say no building height requirement, you mean don't change the building height, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not okay with a hundred stories.
Not saying.
We're not changing that.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Okay, so I hear two distinct changes.
And you're welcome to come see my turnout so you can val- evaluate how you're, you know, multiply it by three and be like, yeah.
I just take my lot and just start multiplying and I can start, I can start picturing.
You get it, yeah.
Might be the new unit of measure.
That.
State.
Oh, turnout.
All right, I'm gonna move this on then, because I think we came to a conclusion there. So uh the next is discussion regarding the dog park project, so I'm gonna bring Crest to the table and I will tell you why this is. Uh in front of us, and that is that we did a very minimal design and on the spot that we'd already discussed putting it. And everything looked great until we put some estimates together and it came back a lot higher than we ever expected.
Yeah, that was. Well, yeah, we're welcome to twenty twenty-three.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
And we're editing.
Well, let me, let me finish here. So a couple of things I you need to know before we start. Um one, I mean, yes. This is in line with other construction escalations we've seen, so this is not unique to the space. Everything has gone up like this. The other thing that I would bring forward is uh because I was shocked by the price, I've reached out to a couple of other sources. That might help us get some additional funding so that we could just go through with our minimal design. One of which is the Lions Club is meeting to discuss whether they would make a contribution. Maybe they would take a line item like the concrete. And just help us pay for that. Um. It it might be a different item, but. Again, the concrete's significant because it becomes your post hole's structure and, you know, so it wasn't like a an elaborate. You know, but there's nothing on here that's elaborate. Anyway, want to talk to you about it before we, because we did not budget this much. We budgeted a lot less.
What did we budget? A hundred thousand. Holy shit. But even the minimum of. The and that would be even the minimum of just putting up a fence. And not putting any kind of irrigation or grass or any, just very.
It's basically a three-dollar numbers.
Just even with nothing, yeah.
But I will also say this, we have done some research and and Brody and Steve helped with this, but we could afford this. Without pulling from, I mean, we could find a way to do this and not jeopardize any other project. We we have everything else looking like it's intact.
Who we can't find like some. Animal people that wanna donate a bench or something?
Well, maybe, but the benches aren't the big.
Holding out like. But things that are. Can we move, we moved the um trail to put in the barrier between the houses and the trees, which I think would be beneficial. We did go. And put a thing on everybody's door that was adjacent to it. We did get one email back that was like, no, we don't want to buy dog park here, but that was.
It's only one person.
So. Yeah. We couldn't just like get the trees that you got ripped out from. Like be hard. I don't know, I don't think that we can say what we could do. I doesn't mean that.
And one, one thing about, so the moving the trail. Was uh like it was Brian's idea, I believe. But the nice thing about it is it adds about half an acre to the inside of the dog park. Because if you had to shift things around for the trail in the existing position, that wipes out a good chunk of usable space.
So how big is the dog park?
One point seven acres.
One point seven acres, that's awesome.
Well, how does that compare to others? Because I mean, couldn't we just shift the whole thing uh south and use that part of the trail as part of the walkway?
We could. But again.
Pretty huge dog.
Okay, but then the the question is.
There are a lot of dogs in the neighborhood.
We also, okay, we also still have. The maintaining of the space that exists. So by moving the trail, we maximize the usable space, which is. A a big improvement. We do have a lot of dogs and a lot of interest and letting them run like this is pretty significant.
Is this one giant park or is there sectioned spots?
Just one.
That's gonna be an issue. You don't have little dog side, big dog side, nothing in the middle?
No.
No.
Have you all have been to a dog park?
Yes.
Yeah.
We've been.
They don't.
They don't.
Some do, but it's, yeah.
Yeah. One that's just east of us that's actually clear filled has nothing.
Yeah.
I think that just.
They have one bench that they put in here too.
Yeah, they've. They put some obstacles and stuff for the dogs.
I've never been to a dog park. Well, that's. I mean, this is the minimum.
We're not suggesting.
Going further like down, years down the road, we can always.
You can add benches.
Add certain things. We do have like four benches in here. There is one big tunnel where dogs can go through and.
And up and over, which, but that's actually gonna be salvaged, so that's not a big cost.
No, yeah.
That's the one thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Other than that, it's just. Putting a minute.
It'll be the best part of.
All the dogs.
All of them.
Well, so it's not gonna be another, what it is is we'll build the earth up around it and plant grass so that dogs can climb up. For some reason, dogs love to be in a high spot to look down.
Your totter stuff. Go look at.
Anyway.
Every year we'll add a little.
You can add, you can add a little something or other. Love to go and just run in the parks. It might help us to help not have so many dogs running off benches in our park too.
And I think that that's another thing by maximizing the space, because this is totally unusable for anything else. If we use the space properly, I think the bigger dog park, there's less reason for like too many dogs in one space. Or the dogs can just run.
We just need a dog park. Oh my goodness.
And I was talking to Crest earlier and we were talking about the, obviously the concrete's the big cost here, but it sounds like even if you cut it, you still have to fill in that space. You're not saving a hundred K.
No, you're just, you'd still have to do like a rock mulch, it would be like half.
So what is the mulch that is thirty-two thousand dollars? What, I mean, like, is that just bark?
Yeah.
Yeah, and going where?
On the outside.
Yeah. I don't know, there's like people with tree companies.
My place every day. Redo that though.
You don't have to redo this a lot. You do the, the mulch like in playgrounds, you have to have it a certain height. This is what you just.
Probably get you a pretty good deal up at the, uh, landfill.
Yeah.
I'm sure we can.
One of the tree companies are constantly ripping out all these trees.
Here's another, here's another thing to throw. None of this has been actually bid. We could, we could go out and bid with the existing design and see what people come back with.
There's nothing worse than choking in front of people. And everybody watching.
But we could go out to bid and find out what people will actually suggest, because we have not been out to bid. This was.
This is just estimation?
Just in-house estimation. This is Brian's estimate.
So, okay, I like how you threw him under the bus right there.
It's not really, I mean, he's been a pretty accurate.
Yeah.
He is pretty accurate, so that's actually a compliment, but it's Brian's estimate.
Yeah.
It's all based on things we've done in the city in the last year, which that's why I.
So why do we need concrete around the dog park?
It's a walking path, so the dog owners can walk.
Just going, uh, do we have to do that?
We do not.
That's what we were saying.
But.
Fifty thousand dollars.
But you don't save that much, because then you have to go back and cement all the, well, you have to cement all the fence posts.
Yeah.
See, that's part of it. And then, you know, and, because we talked about taking that out, um. But what if the Lions Club pays for the concrete? Because that's a possibility they've been talking about.
Well, I, I would like to, I think you could reduce the concrete more, because you're gonna have it along the one side with the trail anyway.
No, that's just the asphalt trail.
Yeah, but, but disaster fault, can you not put?
Yeah.
Uh, asphalt can count as a sidewalk.
Well, we could, uh, so you could put asphalt on the, I'm talking about the inside of the fence, there's a walking path. You can either put that, if you were to do asphalt, you have to replace it more often.
So, so you think we were gonna be doing laps inside there with the dogs?
I'm gonna say, I've never seen a dog person walking around the perimeter. They just.
They do it all the time at the Roy Dog Park. The Roy Dog Park.
Fast, some people might, you know, they get their own hamster.
Two of the closest ones here, because your dog can run free and it can run alongside you or it can run and play with dogs. And dog parents tend to walk. So two of the most prominent dog parks have that exact feature.
Well, see, I'm just thinking in terms of right, right by the dog park in, in, east of me, there's a park that has a trail that. You can walk with your dog on the leash, right? So I, I just think if there are ways that we can have this, fifty grand could go away from, for the asphalt. And I, I just, I, I would love to do whatever we could to take this to a more manageable price. And I'd say that that could be even, I mean, benches, four thousand dollars for benches. That just is a lot of money. All those little things, yeah, we. Who, who thinks of a bench as a thousand dollars?
Nobody does.
Yeah, so it just becomes so excessive and I'm, I'm not saying that that is, I know that these things cost money, but I would. I would, sorry, Steph.
Cause you, you've got to have shade, you've got to have benches, yeah.
What kind of tree?
So, yeah, so that's my, so the concrete is where I would say we could break it, break off a chunk.
I'm messing with you.
Sorry, are you talking to me? Oh, you don't.
I'm teasing.
They are great for keeping people out of your yard, those are.
So. Our options are, we can, we can go out to bid and see what it comes back, and then we could look at line items with real hard bids. We could just simply try to wait on this. I think that it's only gonna go up in cost. Um, let me scrap the whole project, but.
No, let's not do that.
I think it is needed and I think it is a great location, and so does most of the park staff think that, you know. Because this becomes added park space.
Location, I don't get it. And like, a horrible weed infested fire. And heated goats for probably like five years.
Yeah, well, more than that.
Like it's, um, disgusting, so something event.
That's why the grubbing costs and the other. That's, you know, that's why some of the cost, because this land was actually better off, so they went and put that, you know, we. There was some concrete left over, it's been cleaned out, but this kind of got beat up with the recent construction in that area.
So I think we all agree, this is a good place for it, we should do it. Let's just figure out how we can afford it.
How we can afford it, okay.
That's a hefty.
So are you okay if we go out to bid and see what it comes back at?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then.
I mean, keep in mind that this is what we're paying for a bathroom these days. Uh, that's insane.
Like a single bathroom?
Well.
Why do I feel like my level of catching on today just sucks?
It's a double stall.
Two hundred and thirty was, um, Stoker's own bathroom.
Holy goodness.
Which, when you think about that, and Rock Creek was more than that.
No, Rock Creek was only a hundred.
And it was because so many years ago.
Founders.
Founders was.
Yeah.
A four hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars is a great price tag for the sanity of a lot of our dog owners in the city. There's really nowhere to take a dog, just to let them off and run around without getting yelled at by somebody.
I agree, but if we get four hundred, that's even better.
I would not disagree, maybe we can, but I still think it's such, it'll be such a good thing for the.
This is a.
The only thing compared to a dog park is Costco, so let's do a one-two punch here, you know?
They are across the street.
Yeah, right across the street.
All right, so we're gonna move on. Um. Okay. Next item is discussion regarding proposed amendments to the Syracuse City Budget for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Steve.
All right.
Walk us through this.
I'm gonna go through every line. Um, some highlights of all this is carryover projects from last year into this fiscal year. Some, uh, notable changes with the park maintenance facility, two, to be specific. One is the wall, or the fence around the extended yard. Um, we feel like it's a great use of resources to, to pay a hundred eighty thousand additional cost. Uh, and then asphalt around the parking facility right now is to the front edge.
Yeah, just like up to the.
We, we've, we're proposing going around the back edge, if you've been down at Public Works, it's a good example of maybe mirroring that where the. Asphalt goes to the end of that, that first building, about twenty-five feet off of it and it turns into like the gravel. Or a road.
We just did that recently and it's worked real well.
Uh, that's, that's a two hundred thousand dollar increase. So as to our, we're, we feel like are very, very good and, and value adding, um, for that project.
Did they? Put the metal on the wrong building, did that, did that cost this extra? What happened there?
Uh, the pole barn?
Yeah. Do we have to pay, did they put the metal on the wrong? I don't know, enclosed the wrong pole barn over there?
They built it to the wrong spag, right?
Did they, and did that cost us extra?
So the design, there was a design error. From what we approved versus what was actually in the bid documents. Um, and, uh, we brought that to, to the attention of the architect. And they have given us a credit on their services on the fire station to make, to help compensate for that.
Well, at least they're making good on it. But did, does that? No way.
With inflation?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Covering.
Well.
No.
They're not that good.
It's not. Yeah.
How much is the credit?
They. Uh, the credit was. I wanna say, it, it did not cover the whole thing.
Really?
Um, but we didn't, we didn't necessarily have to make those changes to the mul barn. It's just better to do it now that it's built that way. So I think, yeah, so it, it makes sense, yeah. The design, the design credit doesn't cover the additional cost, but it helped by about a third something.
You know that?
I, I'm, I'm, for you guys.
Uh, next item on our note is for Stoker Park, we, we had an additional two hundred thousand to help restore, replace the grass and irrigation. That wasn't in the original cost estimate. Uh, dog park we just talked about. I'm putting it in as proposed, if the council wants to change that, obviously.
Should we change it to four hundred for now, or do you guys want to say that four seventy-two and? Well, we're not approving these tonight.
It's not approved.
Will we get anything back though, before we do have to approve it?
Yeah, um, so.
I did want to note forty-two thousand, that is contingency costs, just to.
Yeah, well, there's a pretty big contingency. I think that if we put it in at four, we could probably get it down to that. One way or another.
Our cost anyway, like the, uh, the egg grenade are being covered by.
We will come back to the council with bid proposals. Budget can be. Just at a.
I would say keep it high and then go and say do less.
Yeah.
With the.
Okay.
Uh, the fire station we talked about, that original budget was before the design. Uh, seven million to eleven and a half million. Uh, those are the, the main ones I wanted to cover. Uh, do you have any other questions on this packet?
We've seen, um, Steve's also gonna be covering the adjustments to the wage scale discussion, so the fire battalion.
Yeah, so we, we discussed this and at the proposal from the fire chief, um, he would prefer this position being exempt. Position as a battalion chief, and so these policy manual changes are to mirror that, that proposal. So these, there's four or five sections throughout that we went through and, and reclassified. It is a unique position, it's a twenty-nine, twelve-hour position. So as you read through the policy manual, there is, there is sections for exempt, but we call this out separately just because it's different. Um. Yeah, that's.
I think it's the going way this is handled, and if we want to be competitive and get competitive, or we need to kind of manage it the way that it is.
I know that some said it's mixed, some cities have done non-exempt, some do exempt. And I know in some cities that do non-exempt, some of those battalion chiefs actually end up making more than the fire chief based on. Overtime and all that, so I think that's why we prefer to.
Kind of look up, find out if it's empty. Yeah. It means you don't have to follow labor laws.
Uh, no. Very rarely does she.
This is, um, we have chosen the exempt status based on their job responsibilities because they will be more.
What is exempted?
And it is.
Then what?
We don't have to pay overtime.
Yeah.
And we don't.
But we.
But that is based on.
They also don't get breaks, they're not.
In this proposal though, we still propose to pay straight time overtime, not.
Yeah.
So we're still compensating.
And it is in accordance with the FLS.
Yes, it absolutely is. So for the record, in there, Steve just corrected me, but in there we give them the option to choose whether they do comp time or, or exempt. Or I mean, uh, straight time.
Yeah, being paid out versus comp.
Is that pretty normal? Do we do that within our policy?
Yeah, with all of our positions, the employee has the choice between taking overtime.
Both sides.
Or, or non-exempt.
For not.
But for exempt, for, for the other exempt employees, it's just comp.
Correct. So why do we, you just think it's not competitive enough to, that we give this one position that's.
Yeah, so in this language, the, the, the ability to do additional straight time is based on a callback. Or emergency shift cover, so not more of an, a shift co, a shift cover can be twelve hours or more. So when it's that significant, um, it, we feel like they're gonna want the payment, and we don't want. You know, twelve, twenty-four hours of comp time, because then that's just more time they're off that we're gonna have to cover with someone else.
Yeah.
And so it's better to just pay, give them the option to get paid the additional time. Now, if they come in for like a training, like a two or three hour training, that's just part of being exempt. There's no additional comp time or.
Okay.
Or there's no, yeah, no additional pay straight of function of the.
Yeah.
And so that's how it functions more like a, a traditional exempt employee.
Yeah, and that's kind of the advantage of exempt is if they have duties that are outside of a normal schedule, but they're part of what they're supposed to do, like. You know, we don't have to cover that in a different.
Yeah, on my boss's. This is good. Cause I don't get this treatment.
Set them the timestamp.
I agree, you should.
There was also one amendment to the section twenty with our mileage. Uh, we were at seventeen miles if you had to take home vehicle. We were proposing living at the twenty-five, and I believe we, we approved that previously, which didn't make this change in the policy manual itself.
I support that.
Okay.
That was it.
Alright.
Uh, again, not voting to, to our, tonight, but, uh, I don't, can this be consensus? If, if it can, so.
Consent.
Do you have consent?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Next is the contracting, uh, policy. This was recently brought up. That, um, just due to deadlines, this would apply mostly to internal staff, uh, department heads in particular. Giving them the ability to sign documents, Brody, you wanna?
Sure, I mean, I re, rewrote the memo.
Okay.
She wants to, she can say it.
I wrote this sort of selfishly, um, because our voca grant, we have to sign off on, um. Certified assurances every so often, and I'm the one that really is like overseeing the grant and handling everything and the changes in the law. And what I have to sign for what the authorized signatory has to sign off on, and so it just makes a little bit more sense if. Um, because our policy says Brody can sign off, or the city manager can sign off on grant agreements, but that gives him the authority. So he has to be the signatory on all of these certified assurances, and it's just. Um, I end up having to check with him, did you get this email on something that he, he has no idea about? And then explain it so that he's, can actually sign off on it, and so it just makes more sense if we have somewhere in our policy. That he can either de- delegate it, that was the first option that I proposed. Or if the council's not comfortable with that, that we include under the department head. Um, the specific provision for certified grant assurances.
I will admit that when I first heard this, I was a little nervous, because I didn't want this to creep out into. Department heads can certify all kinds of things on their own, but in the specific, uh, uh, situation where specifically we're like. Certifying anything that's grant related, um, really the department heads are better equipped to know. That it was executed properly and that we met the, or the guidelines of a grant, so. I support it there, I just, I want to be cautious that we don't allow creep into, I write my own, uh, budget. Or I can write my own, you know, things that are going a little too far.
Well, and if, if you were comfortable with the first option, the unless otherwise delegated, that would just. Give me the ability to have, um, the city manager like sign a letter and then I could show our grant. Um, people that I have the authority to sign off on those things.
And this just applies to grant.
Yeah.
It's not.
And I'm okay with.
It's not other contracts.
Yeah, I'd be okay with that.
Okay. So are we okay with consent agenda?
Yes.
All right, um, the next item is discussion of our city annexation policy plan. Um, this is actually one that I initiated, because through this whole policy annexation, lots of things have come up. And it's kind of an unwritten rule that we don't, uh. We don't annex properties that are not contiguous, but it's recently been suggested by the county. They would like us to annex all the roads in the city, and then every property would be contiguous. And I want to suggest that that is not contiguous, that it actually has to border more than one side of the property. To be a contiguous property because of that very issue. We don't want to be having these lollipop annexations where, you know, you go down the road until one little piece of property gets annexed in. Because it's attached to the road. So it's a simple fix here, and that is that it has to be, or contiguous on more than one side to be a contiguous property. And this has come up several times, um, while I've been on council, this is actually kind of our. Like I said, it's kind of an unwritten rule that county was decided to challenge this a couple of weeks ago when I was in one of the county meetings. Um, the reason that it came up is we had a situation where somebody was asking to, uh, annex a property. That was not even close to city property, like, like half mile away or so, and the idea was. If we do that, you can't require the developer to put in the infrastructure between the city and this new property. So that means the city ends up by accepting something off in a corner. We end up with some kind of burden if we take that off. We're not forced to, but it, it puts a situation where we could be forced to take off things. Outside of the development.
And state law requires continuity to the city borders as well.
That is true.
And I think on top of maybe the city contributing along the way, all the infrastructure, I think it also prevents. Some of those little islands of development that create, you know, the sidewalk and curb and gutter and all that.
Yeah.
And then later we have to tie into it, and it's not always like right where you want it, or it's just, uh.
Well, and the idea that it, what's the use of curb and gutter if there's a half mile of non-curb and gutter between you and the next curb and gutter? You know, a, and I get it, that'll get filled in someday, but this is, this is. In, in the past, the other things come up, is there's been some contention over, well, who takes care of snow removal on a road that goes between two parts of the city? Well, we always do, because it's impractical for us to pull up a plow blade and then put it back down. But the city takes the tax dollars that come for road improvements, or the county. But the city takes the tax dollars that come for road improvements, or the county. County takes that money and says, oh yeah, it's our road, we we get all the tax benefit. What we've talked to the county about is maybe we should annex roads, but not for the purpose of making contiguous property out on these. What I called.
I would agree. They don't take care of them anyways, those county roads, they suck.
I, well, that's true, we tend to take care of the, the roads in our city, and they know that, and they're happy to give us the tax dollars back. We just need to, uh, we need to make sure that what it doesn't do is authorize us to put one-off little lots. Here and there in the city because they're connected to a road that.
Give us tax dollars back, then why do we, I mean, we just defeated our own conversation there.
No, I said they're willing to, if we annex the roads. But we don't wanna annex the roads for the purpose of allowing a one-off lot to suddenly, that is not contiguous.
We'll annex the road when we annex the lot next to it.
Yes. So is that? We we do need to actually codify this because it's kind of, as I got deeper into this, I was telling you about what we always do and. Realize that it's not actually written down.
So I also might suggest, um, our annexation policy plan is from two thousand two. So we should probably update some of the um. At least population items, um, and revisit, um, we do need to update our mass as well. Because some of those um, properties have been annexed in, but I also wanted to see if there were other areas of interest, I know. Um, we've had discussions um, since, um, I think it was the Burgess Annexation about um. When we would require um, properties to put in infrastructure, I'm not sure if that's something you want. Included in the policy.
And I think we talked about upon development of the property.
Yeah, I think we wanna update that as well.
The character of the cities.
Yeah, it says mostly.
Okay, so if we're good with that, we will.
This will go, um, this will have to go through the planning commission, so I'm not sure if the council wants it. Back here for discussion.
Do you want it back after their recommendation, or? We kinda know what we're doing.
Yeah, so we can see what it looks like.
I guess he's saying you wanted.
How about this, if they recommend a different change, we'll review it again. If they agree with the changes we're suggesting, then we could go straight to a vote.
Oh, yeah.
Is that acceptable? That way we're not wasting extra time, alright, this last issue came up at cog, there was cog reached out. To all mayors, um, because the state has now. Put a threat of taking back. Land use authority from all cities, like completely. And one of the suggestions that was if we don't just revoke all land use authority from cities. Uh, this is coming from uh, Governor Cox, and uh, it's being uh, hosted by Representative Lincoln Fillmore. You know who he is, um, anyway, Representative Fillmore is saying, well, we have. You know, the state's granted this to cities hundred years ago, um, but we could take it back. And one of the al- alternatives to this is the suggestion that we would blanket authorize R-one development. Anyplace, anytime, in any city. And uh, like churches, you know, cause let's say you can't. Say no to a church in any zone, you could say, we can't say no to R-one in any zone. But that's complicated, and the league does not support this because. You could have an industrial zone, and somebody says, well, I hate, gonna plop a house right in the middle of an industrial zone. Well, again, this comes back to what I said, there was some contention from the realtors saying. You went and put up a bunch of housing, but it wasn't anything we could sell, and so are we really solving the housing crisis? What seems to be the pressure is we don't have enough starter homes.
Oh, so they wanna make money off of the housing. Because the housing crisis, people are happy to move into apartments, so they're, they have housing, it's just they don't have housing they can sell.
Yes.
Oh, so it's money they pay, okay.
Okay, just telling what it, here's what the league is suggesting, here's what the league is suggesting. And cog, okay, cog is suggesting. Cog?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
That's, that's all the mayor.
Wasn't?
Oh, literally Cox.
Yeah, wasn't he realtor?
He was a city council, he's a lawyer.
Was he a lawyer?
Uh, he's a barber, actually. Anyway, here's the thing, so here's what, um. They're asking, they're saying that what we need to do before, and this is why this is on this, because we would have to approve this letter. In our next meeting, um, in our November fourteenth meeting, they're asking before November fifteenth, cities write a letter. That accounts for the things that we've done in our affordable housing plan. And how it's going, and we deliver that signed by councils to the legislature by November fifteenth. Here's the thing, so uh, the result is that. Representative Fillmore and Governor Cox are saying, too many cities did not do an affordable housing plan. As we talked about, there is no penalty if we had not.
It's not that they didn't, I don't think it's about the house. We did what we were supposed to do, it's not our fault that the people building the houses are selling them like twice as much as they planned in the first place.
We did, so what the league and what the league and mayors are suggesting is, if we reinforce that we did our part. Then right before the legislature goes into the pre-legislative session this fall. They will have the information and the ammunition to argue that it's not just. That most cities didn't comply, because there are some cities along the Wasatch Front that literally just said, we will not. We won't comply, we won't do anything, we're just not going to, and so with that, that's where the push is, trying to gather realtor or. Trying to get legislatures together, that would say, we want to take back land use authority, so the ask from. The league and from the other cog group type groups is reach out to your legislature and reinforce what we are doing. So that they have, that our legislatures have legislators, have the ammunition to fight back. Against those that say we should just rescind all land use authority.
I mean, sure, I'm I'm assuming it's an easy letter, cause we've already basically written it.
Right, yeah, I was just gonna say, some items we can include are, um, we could list the, the items we have in our portable housing plan. That we have already done, and um, also some stats on the number of units we've approved, number of units under construction. Um, those kinds of things to show that.
Maybe they should talk to their construction.
And again, this is another thing that was brought up in the meeting was that there are a lot of. People say, uh, for the league, they're saying a lot of measures have been voted into place and are in progress. But because they're not completed, some of the people are saying, like they're saying, well, Orem City has not put in enough apartments. But Orem City's actually approved tons of apartments, and the fact that they're not built yet. Is an economic issue of financing and another thing, so it's not cities holding back. The chance to develop or to to work with the housing issues, and that's what we're trying to establish. Is that we have done our part as cities.
Sure, we can send a letter, yeah, I have no problem with that.
I'd like the letter to also include why we want to keep. What, why it matters to us, not just here's what we've done, but this is why it matters that we keep this power within our realm.
And in that, I think is the number one thing is, as cities, we know our land to.
And it's the difference between federal and state government, it's the same as state legislature versus municipal. We know exactly what we want to build here, and it also gives us a control to keep our land values.
We also know some of the things that don't show up on a map. We, we know, for example, I mean, you could look at a map and say, oh, there's all this property going out towards the Great Salt Lake where it's dried up. We also know that things sink out there, so.
So once they take away land use, are we just, does the, do all the cities just become glorified HOAs?
Is that what we are, the board of an HOA?
Uh, I think once you remove land use, I mean, you're you're approving ordinances and the things you can put in yards and some streets.
She was very concerned when she came back from the governor's meeting. She is one of our representatives, uh, uh, and that from cog to the state, and. She said, I was very concerned, they were very pointed when they uh, talked to us mayors and said, you're not living up to. Your heart of this, and so she said, look, we feel like we are, and we feel like this county particularly really is. So we wanna get these letters out to help, because there is a strong. Alliance with the Northern Utah group of legislatures, so we need to get them to. Look at this as a positive and not look at this as, we're the ones causing the problem. Admittedly, a lot of rural Utah just ignored this whole task, I get it, I understand why, they don't have these issues. And they're not part of the solution either, we're not suddenly gonna go put apartments out in Delta. Um, maybe they will, but not at the scale that we're putting them in an Orem, so. Anyway, my point is, is that we're, we gotta do a little work here to give them the ammunition that we need.
Sure. So we can draft it up and just sum it out for.
And we'll just need to sign it that night and we'll. Alright, does anybody else have anything that we need to talk about tonight? Before we. Close this and move into another meeting, so we're gonna adjourn.